So the Trams are owning eighty-two thousand of our land. The Helensile are owning three hundred thousand of our land. The Angeram are owning six hundred and forty thousand hectares of our land. Just idling there. It is a problem. And others, we also have from Austria, from Switzerland, from the Netherlands, from China, from Italy and Canada. So even Chinese here, in terms of foreigners, not Chinese that are here, in Beijing owning farms here. It is very, very, very problematic. But, Honorable Chair, as I come to the conclusion, the constitution, in fact, we were always having this debate to say, man, this constitution that we have adopted is a problem, must be amended and things like that. But as your children, we went to look at this constitution very well and try to understand, okay, while we are maybe finding time to amend the constitution. Now, how do we study the constitution? To see what is it that we can do within the confines of the constitution? Because remember, there's this debate to say, no, you cannot amend the constitution and all those things. But we are of the view that we can amend it, the whole of it. But before even reach the amendment of the constitution, what does the constitution permit? What does the constitution allow for us to be able to deal with the land question as we understand? Particularly, we are just isolating the issue of foreigners. We're not talking about the whites, yet we are just talking about the issue of foreigners. That's what we are primarily, because we think that that's a quick win. We think that you as a generation of MPs, when the history of our country is written, would be that generation. Of course, freedom fighters are important. But who remember all hundred and four of you who have done something significant in dealing with this problem of foreigners owning our land? Now, in Article sixteen, this is amazing, it says, and it says that all persons shall have the right in any part of Namibia to acquire, dispose and what was your property. All person basically means everybody on earth. Everyone, no wonder this statistic, no wonder one point two million foreigners own land. Because the constitution says all persons, everybody on earth can come here, in fact, they don't even have to come here. They just have to do a transaction through lawyer, they transfer their money. You can acquire land without stepping into Namibia, you can sell land. Because you can acquire and own and dispose. You don't have to come to Namibia. You don't have to, you can sign electronically, just wherever you are. You can acquire and you can sell it, you can speculate it and do whatever it is that it says. Already, that's a problem in Article sixteen subsection one. But it says that all people can do this. But provided that parliament may by legislation prohibit or regulate, as it deemed expedient, the right to acquire property by person who are not Namibian citizens. So this problematic constitution and problematic clause give us an opportunity to say parliament can however, regulate. We're not going to be amending anything. We are not going to be changing this so-called chapter three thing. We are just going to regulate in other way to fulfill that promise. Now, we are submitting, Honorable Chair, activeist Cavett will go in details, that that promise, that constitutional promise of Article sixteen subsection one, that parliament can regulate, can legislate, can pass by legislation, prohibit or regulate. So in other word, the constitution say we can do things, we can prohibit, we can just stop it altogether. We can stop it altogether or we can regulate. So in other word, prohibit, we say you don't come in this room as a foreigner at all. But regulate means you can come in, but you cannot sit at certain seats, you can sit there. So even as useless the provision is in terms of the benefits of our people, it even goes further and say, if we don't want to prohibit, to stop it altogether, you can even regulate it to say, how are they going to own? But what has happened over the past thirty-two years? And we understand our elders might have been busy or they looked at different things. That promise have never just been fulfilled. It's there, we don't need to amend the constitution. This parliament, you as MPs could actually liberate our people and protect our people in terms of that, on that specific provision. It simply just have not been done. And that's why we are submitting that this can be done. And in fact, we, this is not going to be the first time in the world something like this has happened. In Thailand in nineteen fifty-four, they had a land code. In fact, what they have done in Thailand first, they were, they were saying that, they were saying in the nineteen fifties that you, you, well, foreigners can own land when you have a treaty for religious and what, 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 all those things, when you have some sort of treaty. There must be some countries that own some treaties, in other way, your government must have relations so that we can allow you to own the land. But in nineteen seventy, they did away with that provision. They had subsequent amendments and things like that. So we have done our research and we also make this copy available to the chairperson in terms of that land code of Thailand, where they speak, committee secretary, where they specifically speak to this and they use the term alien. And they are very clear and they say, where, where they allow foreigners to own land for residence purpose, not more than one ripe family, is that right, I don't know now. Is that in other word, they say we can give you for residential purposes, but they are very specific to how much are they going to give you those things, religious purposes and many other things. And they regulate these things. But now, a person can come from Nigeria today, even in the city of Windhoek, they, they just get a church very fast. But a member of parliament, you struggle to get land there, the city of Windhoek. But we seem to want to give land to, to people to establish churches. Maybe people have problems, our pastors, pastor Kandum and others, maybe are, we don't believe they are good enough as Namibian pastors. But we seem to accommodate all these people from others. But they are regulated in Thailand as far as this thing is concerned. So we are very clear, because remember, Honorable Members, the land will never increase. The land will never increase, it will keep decreasing and decreasing and decreasing. So, but not only that, in New Zealand, they are very, in fact, they were having a problem because a lot of foreigners were there, they are speculating in New Zealand, they started owning properties and many things like that. So it was a bit of a problem, they are also doing those intervention in New Zealand. Maybe the committee members can go to Thailand and also to New Zealand and see what this thing is happening. So in conclusion, we are really here in hope that this generation of members of parliament will be our liberators. Because land will keep decreasing and decreasing and decreasing. And if we don't put a stop to it, you are going to have, where the land that is owned by the Mexican and how did this Mexican end up owning it? It was retreated as a game farm, erindy. Okay? This Rashid, how they did it very cleverly, this foreigners for him to own those mighty farms. So they realized because of agricultural land, the foreigner cannot own it, cannot, cannot buy it. They quickly came in a room and they said, okay, since you are stopping me from there, I'm going to buy it. One day, you, this foreigner buy it and they say they are buying it on behalf of government. After buying those farms on behalf of government, government in the same room say, hey, by the way, you can rent it for ninety-nine years. The man who's buying it for, is a seventy-something year old man. So that farm obviously is going to give it to, that list, the son and grandchildren for about ninety-nine years. Hundred years, all of us in this room are going to be dead. And we have made a commitment that our children, that those farms are gone. So these things can only be done by you as members of parliament. There's nothing that is stopping you because Article sixteen make provision for it. The current debate is to do away with sixteen. But we are submitting to you that before we even do away with sixteen, they said and think that we can, we can prohibit, we can regulate as, as, I'm going to end here in the interest of time, I could have gone on, but we are told that you also have other responsibilities, activeist Cavett.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Mupanda. And thank you, Madame Deputy Chair, for the opportunity. I'll just start off where Dr. Mupanda left. And maybe just to clarify the issue of Thailand. What, what Thailand actually did was a setup, for example, in Article sixteen of the Namibian constitution, that you may regulate or prohibit foreign ownership of land. What Thailand actually did first in nineteen fifty-four, they tried to regulate first foreign ownership of land. Where they, they could allow foreigners to own land for commercial purposes. For example, a certain, certain hectares, industrial purposes and agricultural purposes. But what they did later in in nineteen seventy, they realized that the regulation of the ownership of foreign land, of land by foreigners was not working. So they did an amendment to their land code, where they strictly prohibited the foreign ownership of land in terms of section eighty-six of their land code. Coming back to our bill, our draft bill, it's maybe very important to indicate that we, parliament has developed a culture where the submission of bills to parliament is done by the executive. But it's, it's very important actually to stress that in law, every member of parliament may actually make, have a draft bill submitted in parliament. But we don't know why, but it has never happened since independence. And maybe we would like to also encourage the members of parliament as representatives of all Namibians to submit draft bills for consideration to parliament and not allow. Because members of parliament are, as elected representative are the lawmakers. The executive is a separate branch, cannot always be detecting to members of parliament on bills and be the one to submit draft bills. But parliamentary committees, a committee such as this can own, take ownership of this bill and submit this bill to parliament for approval. What we, what we want to achieve, as Dr. Mupanda has indicated, is nothing new. In fact, when you look at the Agricultural Commercial Land Reform Act, number six of nineteen ninety-five, as amended, has already placed a prohibition of foreigners owning agricultural land in Namibia. And that was done in terms of Article sixteen. Further, the Agricultural Land Reform Act also make provision for expropriation of agricultural land or farms with just compensation. I think the problematic willing buyer, willing seller formula. So what we, what we are bringing to this committee today, it's, it's not something new that has not happened. We are not asking this committee or parliament through this committee to, to commit to any or to, to commit to something that is either illegal or that has never been done before by parliament. As Dr. Mupanda has indicated, when we look at Article sixteen of, Article sixteen of the Namibian constitution, basically Article sixteen one guarantees all persons the right to acquire, own and dispose property. And then when we look at Article sixteen two, it gives the power, it gives the power to parliament to make laws that will allow the state to lawfully establish body or organs to expropriate property in the interest of the state. So Dr. Mupanda touched on the historical background of land ownership in Namibia. Before I just go through the bill, I would like to touch on and maybe just a recap of what really happened during the time of the constituent assembly that could have, or it's actually a question from our side, that what happened at the constituent assembly that has actually resulted in the drafting of Article sixteen in the way it is. Because I don't think the Namibian people actually understand what, what is meant by the provisions of Article sixteen. You know, before independence, before nineteen ninety, commercial land south of the red line was owned, was strictly reserved for, for the whites and the foreign owners. So what has happened, what, what, what the Namibian constitution did through Article sixteen was to expropriate, because you know, the, the black inhabitants who live north of the, of the red line owned communal land. And those communal land rights were vested through the different administrations or traditional, not, they were not referred to as traditional authority then, but the different administrations of the, of traditional authorities. But what has happened at independence with the promulgation of Article sixteen was any land owned by the blacks, which was north of the, of the red line, was expropriated without compensation. I think that's the reality, unfortunately, or fortunately. I know we like, we don't like using the word expropriation without compensation, but basically what, what, what was done at independence, any land owned by the blacks north of the, of the red line was expropriated without compensation. Because the Namibian constitution indicates that the communal land shall vest in a state. The same constitution says privately owned land or commercial land shall vest, I mean, is protected in terms of Article sixteen. And who could, who are the people who could own those commercial farms, for example? It's the whites. So when I take you to the first land conference of nineteen ninety-one, the then Prime Minister, Dr. Hagenkei Kuk, who's the, His Excellency, the current President of Namibia, indicated that of that commercial land that was privately owned, there were six thousand two hundred and ninety-two farms in Namibia. Of those farms, six thousand one hundred and twenty-three farms were white-owned. So basically, what, what, what we have done is the land owned by blacks was expropriated and vested into the state. The land owned by whites was protected in terms of Article sixteen. Why, the question now we pose to parliament is, why didn't they invest the commercial land south of the red line in the hands of the state? If the communal land was expropriated. So, and that forms the basis of our submissions here today and the basis on which we, we provided this draft bill to parliament. Just to go through the bill, before we go through the bill, I would like to provide the context within which the bill addresses the issue of foreign ownership of land. First, the bill will look at strict prohibition of ownership of land by foreign nationals. So the bill explicitly prohibits foreign ownership of land. And then the bill will provide for conditions and circumstances of utilization of land by foreign owners. I mean, foreign nationals. So we prohibit, but we also provide for circumstances which they may utilize. We are not saying in which they may own the land. The foreigners are allowed to utilize land in terms of this draft bill and will provide for those conditions. And then the second part of the bill, the second part of the bill will look at the existing owners of land. I mean, the existing foreign owners who own land in Namibia. What is going to happen to their land? In terms of those foreigners who own urban land, those foreigners who own agricultural, commercial land and those foreigners who are also leasing communal land. With Chinese nationals who are leasing communal land north of the red line. So basically, the black working class who, who are leasing land from the state, north of the communal land. For example, when I'm saying I'm going on holiday, I'm going home to Opur. The, the writing of Article sixteen basically provides that I don't own land in Opur when I'm going home. That village, which I call my village, is owned by the state. What I own is the house, traditional hut that I have. That's why when you look at the expansion of towns and village councils, when, when they are expanding into your village, what government does, they pay you out for that traditional hut you have. But when they expropriate a commercial land or commercial farm, they value that land and they pay you out based on the value of the land. Not on a farmhouse you have built in nineteen fifty, for example. So that's the fundamental difference we have. And then we, the general provisions, which will touch on the expropriation of land, how the state in terms of the bill should expropriate land owned by foreign nationals. And we also look at the applicability of existing legislation. If there is a conflict of law with this, basically with, with this draft bill. And then we also have to protect the proceedings. We will have to provide, I mean, protect the bill against proceedings in foreign courts. And basically, that sums up our draft bill. Maybe just to start off, basically, I think it's very clear who's a foreigner in terms of Article, Article four of the Namibian constitution. The definitions and the qualifications are there on how you become a Namibian citizen and all that. So I won't be repeating that. I'll go straight to, I see the screen is failing as you. The pages, okay. I'll go straight to the applicability of the act, the act of the draft bill, sorry. It applies all land that forms part of the territory of Namibia, of the Republic of Namibia. Whether that land is state-owned or owned by private individuals. The objective of the, of the draft bill or the, which will eventually become the act, were already highlighted by, by the deputy chairperson of the committee, which is basically to prohibit ownership of any land, foreign ownership of any land by a foreign national. As, as Dr. Mupanda has indicated, that Article sixteen provides for you can regulate, you can prohibit. Our draft bill strictly provides for the prohibition of foreign ownership of land. The same prohibition we already enjoy under the Commercial Land Reform Act. Just to, when we look at the, at section four one of the draft bill, it provides that no land in Namibia shall be owned by foreign national. So if you, if you are not a Namibian, in terms of the definitional elements of Article four of the Namibian constitution, you cannot own land in the Republic of Namibia. That's an outright prohibition, as provided, as authorized by Article sixteen of the Namibian constitution. So as opposed to regulating their ownership, when it comes to ownership, we have strictly prohibited such ownership. But we have allowed, under Article four, that foreign nationals may utilize the land in Namibia subject to the qualification set out in section six of the act. Okay, now we have provided for circumstances under which foreigners may utilize land in Namibia. They, they may not own land, that's a strict prohibition, but they may utilize land for, under certain circumstances in Namibia. They may lease for the purpose of economic development. So basically, in terms of section five of the draft bill, the land will be owned by Dimbukeni or Honorable Lethet. A foreign national will be leasing that land. May lease that land either from the state or Honorable Lethet. But that lease is only for the purpose of economic development. That's one of the conditions. Yes. Not for the, for the purpose of, of building a church, for example. It should be for the purpose of economic development. And, and, and the circumstances under which that a foreign national may lease that land is also provided for under section five, that such foreign national must be in partnership with a Namibian citizen in which, in which such partnership, the Namibian citizen must not have less than fifty-one percent ownership. Meaning this foreign national, if, if, for example, you would like to, to lease land and set up a factory, you need, your lease agreement on that land, fifty-one percent of the factory or of the economic development you want to set up must be beneficially owned by a Namibian citizen. Beneficially owned by a Namibian citizen means that we know people are being used as proxies. We have, we have picked up that a lot in this country. So when you, when you are beneficial owner of something, fifty, in fifty-one percent, it basically means legally that you control, you have control over the operations, you have the final say over the operation and running of that entity. So, and that is explained also under Article five, that the effective control and management of the partnership, which partnership may be in a form of any recognized jurisdiction personality, must be in the hands of a Namibian citizen. So what happens? Because now we, we know we have a very serious problem on, in terms of the structure in which lawyers may be able to structure these lease agreements that could end up even providing for some set of backdoor ownership of such land. So what we have indicated under, at section five is that such lease agreement may only be concluded upon an application being made on a prescribed form to cabinet. So if, if you intend to lease any land, you as a foreign national, you need to make an application. You need to attach that lease agreement and make an application to cabinet to authorize. But it doesn't end there with cabinet. Because what we have learned, one thing that has taught us about these farms, that there were farms, I know PDM is handling that case in the High Court. He has taken the minister's decision on review. The, the issue of the farm that, that were bought by, is it the Russian nation? By, by Russian national. What has happened there is the farms were later leased for ninety-nine, donated to the state and then leased for ninety-nine years. And it seems this, all these arrangements were done with the assistance of the minister. Yes. So basically, you know that, as, as I've indicated in my introductory paragraphs, that the Agricultural Land Reform Act prohibits foreigners from owning agricultural land. So this Russian could not own the farms. So he bought, donated the farms to government, probably on the advice of the minister on how you can actually end up legally second vending the law, the Agricultural Land Reform Act and owning those farms through a lease agreement of ninety-nine years. So in order to curb that, what we have indicated under section five B is that once cabinet receives such an application for lease and if it's of the view that the applicant will bring economic benefit to Namibia, cabinet must submit the application for table and approval by parliament. Most people ask the interference of, of, that would probably constitute the interference of parliament in executive, that will constitute the interference of, 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 of the National Assembly in execution of, of of the executive powers. But we need to understand that the appointment of the ACC director, for example, it goes, the cabinet with the president makes recommendation to parliament. So it's nothing new, that practice exists within our constitutional democracy. And also to prevent what has happened to, to those farms owned by the Russian national with the help of the minister, it needs to come to parliament. Because we are not taking chances again with the ownership of land by foreign nationals in this country. And we don't want to. So basically, foreign nationals may only lease the land as set out in section five for commercial purposes. And also, when you look at section five subsection three of the draft bill, it provides that no lease period exceeding ten years shall be valid. However, the lease agreement may be renewed upon the same application process. For example, how do you, how do you lease? You know that communal land or north of the red line, you lease it from the state for a period of ninety-nine years. So you want to lease land to a foreign owner for ninety-nine years? That's basically what we would like to prohibit here. So it's limited to ten years. That, that, there we basically, under part one, we basically touched on going forward, what the bill is proposing, not on what is, what could happen to existing foreign owners. So under part two, we, of the draft bill, we basically touched on the So under part two, we, of the draft bill, we basically touched on the, on the existing foreign owners, what is going to happen to the land that Dr. Mupanda highlighted that is owned by, by the Americans, for example, or the South Africans. Some of them who are even absent farmers. So what we propose to, to, to the committee and to parliament is that if urban land is lawfully owned by foreign nationals prior to the commencement of this act, which is the draft bill, such lands shall remain owned by a foreign national. With this second qualification on what could happen, such urban land that is lawfully owned by a foreign national shall not be sold, transferred, or bequeathed to another foreign national after the commencement of this act. So that foreign national will own the land, we are still coming to expropriation under the provision of a draft bill, but you will own that land, but you will never sell that land to a foreign national. Or bequeath it. So basically, ownership or transfer of such land can only be affected to a Namibian national or the Namibian government. And as I've indicated, I will come to the provisions that deals with expropriation of such land later in the draft bill. But it's quite a short bill, we are, we are already at section seven, and I think it is only about ten sections. So I'll, I'll be wrapping up soon. So, now what happens to agricultural, commercial land that is owned, currently owned by foreign nationals? Those farms, we spoke about urban land, let's not confuse the two. The land we have, which we have indicated that can continue being owned by foreign nationals was urban land. We are going to agricultural, commercial land. So agricultural, commercial land that is owned by a foreign national prior to the commencement of the act, which is this draft bill, shall be expropriated by the state within three years from the date of commencement of this act, in accordance with the existing laws. However, we know willing buyer and willing seller is not working. However, foreign nationals who enter into a partnership with a Namibian national after the commencement of this act, which partnership has the effect of reducing the foreign nationals' ownership into the land to not more than forty-nine percent and transfer not less than fifty percent ownership to a Namibian national. And such Namibian national, who is previously disadvantaged as defined by the Affirmative Action Act, shall not be subjected to expropriation. So basically what we are saying is that, if you own a farm, commercial or agricultural land, what will happen is that if you, within those three years, from the passing of the, of the draft bill or the act, if you own agricultural, commercial land and you are a foreign national, if you transfer fifty-one percent of such ownership to a Namibian national, then your land will not be subjected to expropriation. The reassignment of percentage ownership is, in subsection two, shall comply with the provision of the Agricultural, Commercial Land Reform Act. So basically what we have indicated is that, when you look at the Agricultural, Commercial Land Reform Act, there are certain qualifications that have to be made for you, for example, to subdivide the land and all of that. So we allow that to comply with, with such subdivisions. So we have dealt with urban land, what will happen to urban land that is currently owned by foreign nationals? We have dealt with commercial land which will be, commercial agricultural land which will be expropriated in three years. We are moving under section eight to communal land. We are aware currently that communal land is governed through the Customs and Rights or the Communal Land Reform Act, as, as set out in the constitution. And as such, no foreign national is allowed to utilize land for any purpose. When it comes to communal land, when it comes to our villages north of the red line, for example, or any communal land, declared communal land, south of the red line, such land may not be subjected to be utilized by a foreign national. We already prohibited a foreign national from owning such land. Basically what we are saying is that you may, as a foreign national, utilize through lease agreements, commercial land. But communal land, you are never setting your foot on communal land, not even to utilize it. That's the proposal of the bill. And any allocation of communal land to a foreign national before this act shall be deemed to have been an illegal transaction and shall be repudiated. If you are a Chinese national owning land in Okongoro right now, what we are proposing is that, from the date on which this act is passed, such land must be repudiated, it must vest back into the state. We know communal land is not owned, probably they are leasing, probably they even got, they are leasing probably also for nine years, I mean ninety-nine years in communal areas, but we are saying that lease agreement, the date on which the president signs this law into, I mean, this bill into law, forget about such rights. And, and, and to go further, you relinquish such rights and immediately you are not even allowed to lease such land. So we have touched on urban land, I've touched on agricultural, commercial land and communal land. Now we are going to the general provisions under chapter three. We, since we know that chapter three of the Namibian constitution is the one that deals with what other, some legal minds believe it's, it cannot be amended, or it can be amended but you cannot remove from. But I believe any law, any provision in the constitution that does not reflect the aspirations of the Namibian people can be amended. So under chapter three, we are going to, we touched on expropriation under Article nine of the draft bill. And Article nine provides that if it is in the public interest and in the attainment of the objectives of this act and to allow for ownership of land by Namibians in general and indigenous Namibians in particular, the state shall expropriate urban land owned by foreign nationals in the public interest. So basically, urban land, we had indicated that a foreign national shall continue to, to be the owner of such urban land, although indicated that commercial, commercial agricultural land shall be expropriated. Now we are providing for expropriation of urban, urban land owned by foreigners, if it's in the public interest and attainment of the objective of this act. For example, Dr. Mupanda spoke about, is it Switzerland? In Switzerland, what they are basically doing now, they've realized, sorry, yes, New Zealand, yes. What they've realized now is that the estate industry in, in, in New Zealand, in New Zealand has been pushed beyond the affordability of its citizens by these foreign nationals. And we are, we are going through the, the exact same thing here in Namibia. The estate industry property prices are very high in Namibia. I remember, I remember you could buy a farm in two thousand, you could buy a farm for one point two million. Now you cannot even buy a house in commerce by for one point two million. And, and this property market, the prices are being pushed by foreign nationals. When you look at these flats here in Winduk and, and houses, they are owned by foreign nationals. They are the ones leasing and they have the financial resources to buy more. So Namibian nationals will continue to lease from these foreign nationals. And, and that's what, what New Zealand is trying to, to regulate and prohibit. That's why in the estate industry, I don't know whether they are, they finalize the process, but they are, they are in a process of, of burning foreign ownership of urban land or properties. Because they are, the, the, the New Zealand nationals can no longer afford property prices in their own country. I know commercial banks, they'll be very happy with, because, and, and you know what we did, for example, as, as, as commercial banks and as, with the assistance of Bank of Namibia? Instead of finding means to reduce the cost of housing, they have, they have increased the number of years you are supposed to pay for a property. To gain more. So what they realize is that the property prices are so high and they've seen nothing wrong with that, and they want the property prices to, to continue rising. But they've realized that the poor working class can no longer afford them. So how do we make it affordable to them? Is by moving from twenty years to thirty years. And as member of parliament, we are watching this, this is happening under our noses and eyes. And we are giving you an opportunity through this bill to put an end to that. Burn foreign ownership of land, urban land, that's one, the first step. The second step, reduce the number of years in which commercial banks are to finance, if you are buying a property. If I can buy a car for five years, why not, why can I not buy a house for five years? They've realized that it's not affordable, they've increased it to thirty years. And when it comes to expropriation here, I think we, we are constitutional democracy and I think we have overemphasized our, our constitutional democracy. We are more than thirty years down the line since independence. We are no longer suffering from the history of oppression, for example, we are no longer having, we are no longer clouded by, by the history of, of the oppressive white regime. But we have reached a point where we have to look forward in, in the attainment of economic liberation. And for example, look, when, every time we talk about expropriation of land, while we have expropriated communal land at independence without compensation, we always look at Article sixteen to mean that the buyer sets the price of the land they are selling and not, I mean, sorry, the seller, which is the, the foreign owner sets the price. That's why we have even reached a point of, of allowing them to sell to other foreigners, for example. So, for example, let me give a classic example of Chelsea Football Club. Roman Ibrahimovic is, today is affected by sanctions against, because he's a Russian national, where the UK government, basically what they have done, they have expropriated the Chelsea Football Club from him. Without compensation. And here, we don't only provide compensation, but we allow the seller or the foreign national to set the price. I'm selling a Rendi for three billion. Pricing you out of ever owning that land. So we, we, we have overemphasized certain rights over the rights of others. And just to proceed, when we look at, as I've indicated, that we look at the conflict of laws, and we have provided for that under section ten, where we indicated that because this act fulfilled an outstanding addition to, to a fundamental right to the Namibian constitution, which is Article sixteen, it shall be regarded as the primary legislation in, in as so far as it may conflict with any other laws. Obviously, the Namibian constitution is the supreme law. But if there is a law, for example, the Agricultural Land Reform Act, which provides otherwise as what is provided for in this bill, what we have basically provided for is that this draft bill, when, when it's finally passed, it shall take precedent. So any conflict which allows foreign ownership of land in any other laws shall be invalid as far as this act provides. And then we also had to provide for the protection from proceedings in foreign courts. As we know, the moment you, you start touching these foreign nationals, for example, those Americans who owns all those farms, one point two thou, is it two thousand? One point two million hectares of land, they will, they will drag you to their international courts and international tribunals. And that's why we have, we have indicated that in adherence and in pursuance to Article one, two of the Namibian constitution, this act shall not be, because now, basically Article one provides that Namibia is, shall be a sovereign state on its own. So this act, this act, this act shall be subject to proceedings in any foreign court or tribunal. The Americans enjoy the same protections in terms of their laws. You can never drag them before other courts on the events or laws of their own country. And all disputes arising from any provision of this act shall be adjudicated in the Republic of Namibia and in accordance with the laws of Namibia. And basically, to sum up, this act is called the Regulation of Land Ownership by Foreign Nationals Act of 2019. You know, we submitted the bill in 2019 and COVID disrupted everything. Although we, we see that some other bills are also taking precedence over our bill, we have, we have seen, what is it? We have seen abortion bills that, that are being pushed ahead of the land bill and all of that, although this came in 2019. And surprisingly, today is the fifteenth. And on the eighteenth of March, which is Friday, shall mark three years since the submission of this bill or this petition to parliament. Yes. Unless I left out something, basically that, that constitute our draft bill or petition to parliament. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. I was also about to remind ourselves about the time, because I think we have so far less than twenty minutes, if my time is correct. Honorable members, there we have it. Everything was put on the table. It's now for us to seek clarities if there is something that perhaps was not clear enough or any other intervention. Please, the floor is yours. Noble members.
Che, we, we just wanted to, maybe five minutes before the intervention from the honourable members.
Two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes. Just quickly for me, our special envoy to make sure that he has cemented the interventions properly for those questions to come.
Thank you, thank you, honorable chairperson. Thank you, honorable members of the committee here. Very quickly, in the interest of time, I will try to be brief as possible. But I just want to give context with regard to the contribution of agriculture apart from the very critical points which my fellow colleagues have mentioned here, which namely is the historical context, the sociological, the economical, and of course, other very important factors which have to be taken into consideration to make sure that we are able, at the end of the day, able to get this bill through. You will, you will realize that from eighteen eighty-four up to now, what we are seeing is that land dispossession is starting to manifest in different forms, whether it's urban landlessness, whether it's the, the lack of land to be able to be agriculturally productive, we are seeing it manifest all over us, it's, it's omnipresent. And unless if we make a deliberate effort in, in, in salvaging this deteriorating situation in our country, we, 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 we can, we can forget about, at the end of the day, about the, 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 the construction, the national reconciliation mission, which all of us, we are prepared for. What is to be done? What, what is our way forward? And I think my fellow colleagues, activist-in-chief Dr. Amupanda made it very clear that apart from the, the, the historical facts, activist, activist Cavedo was also very clear in terms of the legal context, which will at the end of the day guide this very important document. So just in short, what is to be done? It is for us, at the end of the day, to make sure that prohibition takes place. There could be no way that we allow for a foreigner to, to own land at the expense of the majority plan. Prohibition must take place. But not only prohibition, what we also But not only prohibition, what we also allow for here in this bill is what we are saying, we refer to regulation. So at the end of the day, we are not only saying to foreigners, no, you are not to invest or you are not to occupy land at the expense of the majority black, but we're also making a provision for those particular foreigners who have an interest in our country to do so, but also to a thorough regard for the inhabitants of this country. So in a nutshell, prohibition must take place, regulation must take place. And there would be some of the regulatory frameworks suggested by activist Caveto that will help us at the end of the day to make sure that the concern which we have of chasing away investors is not going to take place. There's no way that we'll be able to chase away investors which comes to Namibia with the good intent to have a mutual beneficial relationship in this country. So in the main, the scarecrow propaganda tactics is something which, at the end of the day, we need to be vigilant of, we need to be careful of because in doing that, in lending an ear to all of these scarecrow tactics that will now degenerate into a form of another Zimbabwe. It's just for us, it's just to retap that which should have taken place on twenty-first March nineteen ninety. And that is the return to the land, that is, that is to give a clear significance to what Article one is suggesting. Article one is very clear, and that is to give over the power to the people. Now, how do you do that? You have to do that through giving over also the land because inland is economy, inland is spirituality, inland is culture. So for us to set today over a hundred and thirty million or how many million hectares of land in the hands of foreign hands, lying idle, lying we could have, which is also another fact, which is the agricultural side of things, where we can give impetus to the agricultural economy of this country. But now land is lying idle. We have a burgeoning challenges of unemployment, poverty, hunger. We have inequality as well. So for us to be able to not only mitigate, but as per, you have your, what do you call it, the the agenda twenty sixty-three ambitions, which make it very clear that we will have to find some way and means to be able to challenge poverty as well as hunger and all of those things. So with this bill, we are sure, not only as the affirmative repression movement, not only as the protest movements out there who form part and parcel of that march in March twenty nineteen, but for posterity as well, for our children's children, to make sure that we don't have foreigners at the end of the day to come and impose perpetual periods of holding on to a land, a land for which many people have sacrificed for. Many people have laid down their lives for. But because of some compromises which had to be made leading up to the height of the liberation struggle in eighteen eighty-eight to eighteen eighty-nine, it is incumbent upon us of this generation not to let this lie idle and to make sure that at the end of the day, the land is returned to its rightful owners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's true, the struggle was for the land. And if we are not honoring our slogan, it's not worth being in the struggle, if I can put it that way, in short. Before we proceed, I would just like to have an indication as to how many members are going to the other committee so that we can give them the first chance to raise their question, if they have any. Otherwise, we can proceed. We are almost to reach eleven o'clock, but I think we can add extra time because this is a very, very important issue that need all of us attention. And at the end of the day, whatever we are going to achieve is for the benefit of all of us, yes, some of us by, as it was alluded to, the leasing of ninety-nine years. The majority of us here will not be there if I own one today. Therefore, those who are going for the other committee, please. Honorable Karuku, I can give you.
Thank you very much.
We are all here, isn't it? I do not see any hand. Oh, thank you very much. Honorable Karuku.
Thank you very much, honorable Deputy Chairperson, for giving the floor. On the onset, I would like to comment the colleagues, fellow citizens there, members of the AR for the good presentation that they have given us this morning. History taught us that it is the young nationals that always waged struggles in any given society, including our own country, Namibia. The struggle for the liberation of this country was waged by the young people of that day. We are politically independent, but economically we are not independent. And land is one of the primary factors of production. We cannot agree more with you on that point. Well, you did all your research. We were about some legal ideas. And my question is about chapter three, which is always a thorn in the flesh of the citizens of this country. You refer to Article sixteen, sub-article one, that you suggest that need to be attended to by the legislatures. I understand that an act is a statute. It is subordinate to the supreme law, the constitution. In your research, maybe you can advise us in case an act is made to replace that provision and this is tested in the Court of Law. What did you found there? What is your finding? What is the assurance? Because you're not the only one to approach, as the Chairperson have said, the honourable Chairperson have said, we're still going to engage with main stakeholders. Just enlighten me on that one. Thank you very much for the floor once again, Honorable Deputy Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Van Veen.
Thank you very much, Honorable Deputy Chair. Unfortunately, I need to run out to another appointment at half past, so I will be brief. Maybe just for information first is that to inform our guest that expropriation of land after independence also took place in the south of this country. The ribofasters, for example, we had private land that was transferred to the state and then it was proclaimed to be state land. But it's just for information. Then one, there was also indicated, it was a question as to why we don't bring bills, private members' bills, to parliament. Maybe just for information, it's just that, you know, we are not all lawyers by tribe, as said by Honorable Kavana. We don't have that legal background to come up with, you know, really strong bills to address issues out there. So if we have the support from a legal team who can do that for us, we'll really appreciate that. Then, this is a very good piece of paper. I'm quite impressed with this bill. I just have one issue or problem on this draft bill, and that is on page eight of your, of the bill. Section seven, two. Section seven, two, yes. We talked about the previously disadvantaged Namibians. And I want you to remove this word. Previously disadvantaged. People who are sitting here, we are also previously disadvantaged people. But we are, we might be a bit better off now, ten years ago. So where will you now draw the line? And I'm just afraid that this will open up again a gap for the already connected elite to take advantage of this. So if you can maybe just look at that word there. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Van Veen. Any, Honorable Ifete? Yes, Honorable Kavakator.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Honorable Deputy Chair. Let me also thank the activists, the chief activist and your team for a very thorough presentation. Something that is stimulating our thinking in terms of what we ought to do as parliamentarians and think that we could have done. Perhaps because of some other thoughts, we did not come to that point where you have basically brought up this very, very important bill for discussion. Honorable Deputy Chair, I would assume that even if you give us another thirty minutes, we'll not do justice to this discussion. Because it's very important, number one. Number two, there's a lot of information. If you listen from what Dr. Joop Amupanda started off with to the legal person and to the colleague, the activists, what would you call him?
Special envoy.
Yeah, the envoy, the special envoy. Welcome. I really think that we need to do justice to this. Because I know for a fact intuitively that when this bill hit parliament, you need to have, if the committee is to own this, if the committee is to do justice to the questions that will be posed on this particular bill, I believe that we need more time to discuss it, not to delay it like it was done for the past three years, but to discuss it thoroughly. Because if you look at where Dr. Amupanda started off with, in terms of the land issue, the general land issue, and what the bill is aiming to achieve, is but a portion of the whole land issue. Because Dr. Amupanda spoke about what happened at independence, how the state basically separated the approaches to private land versus communal land. He even went to the point of elaborating quite eloquently about the settlers, how they came here, how they eventually acquired land. And then quantified the ownership of land. How many millions of hectares are owned, how many soccer fields are owned by all the Namibian people in different categories. So I believe that this is something that need to be interrogated much further. Perhaps, maybe, this is not the only bill that might come from the young minds. And that is understandable also because all the issues around land cannot possibly be addressed in one piece of legislation. It might be different pieces. Joop Amupanda also spoke about the extermination of people that has led to some of the ancestral land being taken away from them and now occupied by other people. That's also an issue. So I believe that from my perspective, this is a, and I know for a fact that, you know, eventually, instead of looking at this bill from a practical perspective, politics will also kick in. Self-interest will also kick in, you know, depending on where you are in the political arena. But therefore, I would want to reserve my general comments on this bill because I would want to engage further with AR and the activists on this bill, maybe on this platform as well. But I want to go to Article sixteen because I am not a lawyer by tribe, number one. Number two, the appointment of politicians to parliament is not on the basis of our competency, it's on the basis of our popularity. I was voted into this position because I was a popular person. So including all the deadwood in Suapo. Now. Well, you must just protect me from interference. Because if I have to, I might just react to some interference. Article sixteen. And I just need to understand this because it says that all persons shall have the right in any part of Namibia to acquire, own and dispose of all form of immovable and movable property individually or in association with Ayas and to be good, their properties to their heirs and legatees. And then it said, provided. And that is where I need to understand the legal interpretation of that provision. Provided that parliament may, by legislation, prohibit or regulate, as it deems expedient, the right to acquire property by persons who are not Namibian citizens. What is the legal interpretation of that Article sixteen, sub-article one? Dr. Amupanda, you mentioned that yes, somebody can come into this room, but then the owner of the room can say, but you must take that seat. That's the only seat that has been allocated to you. Nothing more, nothing less. Now, I just need to understand that particular provision, whether that provision did not negate the foreign nationals to own land. Does it not negate foreign nationals to be part and parcel of that all persons? How does it interpret it in the law? Does it mean that this provision, because it's actually a provision that took, that demeaned the first part of Article sixteen, which I thought, in the way I read it up until today, I thought that, yes, foreign nationals can come in provided they are allowed by us to come in. That's my understanding of that particular provision. That, that's my understanding of that particular provision. Uh, so, and then perhaps just to, um, to ask another question, and I don't, because I'm, I'm not, I cannot complete what I wanted to ask, it's the question of Namibia being a sovereign country. I think my young boy, Kavetu, activist Kavetu, mentioned that in the end, we are actually closing the door for a challenge by a foreign national in a foreign jurisdiction. That's what I understood. Is that, is that, are there no international treaties that might prohibit us from actually doing that, from a legal perspective? Because I, I just want to know, because if we have such a provision in our laws, why did we leave this country so wide open? Because this country, apart from the land that we're talking about, I've been complaining about the ownership, our economy, how we, our, the, the economy of this country is structured. It's number one, a franchise economy. Number two, it is an economy where even our extractive industry are basically for all practical purposes owned by foreigners. And it's through the laws of this country that made that possible. Even if you look at the president, when he was talking about the oil discovery, he was actually saying that legally, we don't own that source, even though the resource is a Namibian resource, and it's, it's because of the law of this country. So I just wanted to know about those two specific issues, but I believe that, Comrade Chair, we need to have another round of discussion with AR to get more justice, to do justice to this particular piece of, uh, uh, bill. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Can we, for the sake of Honorable Van Vek, who asked to be excused, perhaps, if, if you can respond to his question, and then after he's being released, we can continue and give the second round of other members who may pose questions. Okay, thanks.
Yes. In fact, thank you very much, Honorable Van Vek, for, for a wonderful question. In fact, I think two, three days ago, we were having this discussion with my students. I think generally, we have not had enough conversation about this affirmative action. What does it mean? Who does it include and who does it exclude? In South Africa, for example, the word, in our law, I have not come across the legal concept of African. Yeah? Like, you, you literally, the, the legal concept of African. So in South Africa, the, what it means black in Namibia, and what it means, uh, African, it might be very problematic, because South Africa had an opportunity to engage this conversation. Let me give you an example. In the Legal Practitioners Act, Independence, the, the, there, there, there were more white lawyers than black lawyers. So then the Legal Practitioners Act, they must now elect this president and what, what, in the leadership of the, um, Law Society of Namibia. So there, there was an amendment to the Legal Practitioners Act, I think, that make provision for this thing. So in that law, they make a provision that this year, the president of the Law Society will be black. Uh, I think they said previously disadvantaged, and this year will be white. So that's what they've been doing after Independence. So with the passage of time, Yuna started producing a lot of black lawyers, and our children started coming back wherever they are studying law. So we are now having more blacks lawyers than white lawyers. So because the thinking at the time, it was not strategic. So the whites were a minority now in law, in law, in terms of the membership, uh, they are just saying, no, they are enjoying their law. This year is our time. So the lawyers have a practice that is not even democratic, they, they have fluctuation on the basis of race, even something that doesn't make, the purpose was to restore justice. So you have to be very strategic about that. Now, in South Africa, when they say black, oh, in fact, before I go to that, now, they have this situation where white or previously disadvantaged, which is what we have interpreted as black, because we are afraid of using the word black in our law, unlike the South Africans. So Stinahu and Jack Wang, I'm sure they, they've permanent residence or even diplomatic passports now in our country. So if Stinahu or Jack Wang's daughter becomes a lawyer, yeah? And after becoming a lawyer, is now an admitted legal practitioner and a member of the Law Society of Namibia, and they come there at the, at the AGM, I wonder what they are going to do? Because you will not qualify for either categories, because the Chinese are not white, they are also not previously disadvantaged. What, what is going to happen in a situation like, because we have not done a thorough job when it comes to those things. Now, it's the same thing with the South Africans. The South Africans have actually, when they mention the word black, in the category of black, there are three subcategories that constitute this black. One is the coloreds, two is the Indians, three is the Africans. So it get to be complex. The coloreds are part of the blacks. So in other words, when, in the South African context, what we regard as a bastards are black. The Indians are black, the Africans are black. So but without that thorough understanding now, the, 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 the blacks don't even identify themselves as Africans. So in fact, not every black person is African. So it get to be very complex, because we have not gone a step further to actually go and define, because we tried to use the word previously disadvantaged. That, what you are explaining is exactly part of the problem, because we shy away from the word black to go and define it. We have all the previously disadvantaged, you just call it what it is, black, and you identify and you define, that's why South Africans are not having a problem with this affirmative action. Whether you look at the composition of boards and, and things like that, they, they have that factor, that determining factor. If you just check, for example, how many whites are in, in the boards, you, they might even go to fifteen percent because of this confusion, because we are unable, you need to define the concept very well, and then you are able to do that. Historically, what has happened is that, again, uh, there was a student of mine who wanted to, to do research on the bastard identity and the participation in politics. You see, at one point, you had had that one problem in Rehoboth, the way you see, for instance, if you are born in Rehoboth, historically and culturally, if it was up to me, I would have made Rehoboth in that area, I would have been communal land. Supposedly have been communal land, because it's a cultural community. Now you have a situation where the captain, as a matter of practice and culture, the captain was allocating land. If you are born there, you, you, it's your natural rights to have access to a plot. Yeah? That's why we only have in, in our country, we only had two deeds office, the one for Winduk and the one for Rehoboth. So that's why we had those problems of a plot in Rehoboth, the town council have allocated, and the captain is also allocated. So in terms of culture, you would even think that customary law is recognized by our constitution, but at the same time, the town of Rehoboth. So that's why there was those problems, because it, I think Rehoboth generally, for me, is one of those unsolved problems. There was no decisive leadership to be able to understand. There was some study that was done by the late Parliament Chief, when he was Attorney General. Uh, he, he done some studies in terms of what, but after that, the government never really went to the ground and see what is it that you, um, that, what is it that you must do on the question of Rehoboth? Because there's a historicity. There's a historical makeup of Rehoboth, how did it, how was it integrated, how was it organized, how, so it, it, it would be very, I would have thought that it would have been, remained a communal land, so that you are able to recognize the customary laws, because there is customary law in Rehoboth. But now, it is a subject of the, of, of, of urban, of the, what is it called, um, Local Authority Act, and all those specific provisions. So we are definitely alive to, to what has happened, uh, whether there was an expropriation of land. There is a, a judgment now that was done by the Supreme Court, that customary land rights, until, because remember that this process where we have a government compensation policy. But the government compensation policy is very shocking, you, when you read it, is that when these towns expand, they will have Marula, Tree, Umarongo, and all those other things. So in other words, in the imagination of those who are drafting a national policy, they had a particular orientation. So they say, because probably the target was to Ondangwa, Cavango, and all those in the north, because they wanted to move a step further, they ended up having a national compensation policy that identifies particular species of trees, but is also applicable in Rehoboth. So if you don't have a Marula tree, you not get the value of it. So what if I cut all my Marula trees? Yeah? So when you go and read in that policy, those are the things that you find. But I don't think that we have done a thorough job. For example, in those traditional, when Rehoboth expands and there's no Marula tree, how are you going to do measurements in terms of your compensation policy? I think it's something that we, we probably need to, we agree that it may be open to abuse, but it's because we are not clear. Since I was a student of the University of Namibia, we were struggling with BEE, Black Economic Empowerment, it changed to TSEF, it's came to triple BU, what, what, and white people just say, hey, that thing, don't implement it. So it's been about ten to fifteen years now. If, because we don't, we are not clear, there are bastards who think that they are not black. And that's become very problematic. So when we speak of black in that context, uh, they, they, in their imagination, they think they are not included in that conceptualization. So because they believe that they may not be included in that conceptualization, it become very, they become very apprehensive towards something that's actually supposed to benefit them in their, their reality. I believe once we are clear on this, on this matter. So we know exactly what has happened to Rehoboth historically, uh, but we just wanted to give that general historical context. But I think the people of Rehoboth had always remained resolute. There were resistance, even in terms of our liberation struggle, the early petitioners, some of them have been from Rehoboth. And I think if you know the Bukas family, uh, their great grandfathers have been petitioning just together with the, with the freedom fighters that later go, went to form Swapo. So they have been resolute all the way, but some were coming to Independence, because, I mean, when you go in a negotiation, it's, that's how it is, the result is give and take. But I think our history is very clear as far as that, that specific role. Um, so that's the context in which we were talking about, we are aware of that bastard in Rehoboth, what has happened, uh, the previous disadvantage, but we do know that what is happening, we know that there's never been a, a bill that was tabled, but we also believe that things are changing. You know, things are changing a lot. Uh, let me give you an example, Honorable Ifete knows this very well.
In short.
Yes. Uh, at one point, yeah, at one, at one point in the Swapo Central Committee, there was a huge discussion about this youth that are discussing party matters on Facebook, this book face thing. It was a very, the, the leaders were very apprehensive towards that. They want to take a resolution, but I can tell you today, in twenty twenty-two, ninety-nine, with my eyes closed, ninety-nine percent of the members of Swapo Central Committee are on, on, on book face. So things continue to change, just like that. Whereas you are punished for something, the president now, every time, every day, the president is on Facebook and Twitter and everywhere. So even with these things of bills, uh, things will naturally change and, but they will have to be casualties first, before things become normalized. Uh, and I think it's, I, I'm not too concerned about the fact that people are not having bills. Yeah, with the passage of time, members of parliament would develop that internal capacity, they will be able to present those bills and do, uh, uh, and, mind you, it might even be members from the ruling party who will be presenting individual bills with the passage of time. It looks like it's not possible now, but I can guarantee you that things are changing, it, it might happen. So I don't know, Madam Chair, whether I can just restrict the response to that, because you have to, to go on.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much. I, I thought we can push our meeting to half past eleven.
Twelve.
Because apart from those who were going for the other committee, initially, our meeting ends at eleven, as I alluded to earlier, and it's also for the purpose of one might have arranged for another appointment, uh, after eleven, and again, one might be going to prepare for the session, uh, two o'clock in the afternoon. However, I'll ask the intelligence of the members if we can, uh, push our meeting to, let's say, quarter to twelve. I think we have humble time to...
Just twelve.
Twelve o'clock?
Twelve.
Twelve, no? Okay. So are you comfortable with, with that time, all of us?
You wait the next session.
Thank you so much. Um, can you perhaps proceed with the response to the other questions before I ask for the second round of, of questions?
Yeah, so the, the, the other two questions are actually similar, uh, in so far as it relates to article sixteen. So I will just give a general context, the, the capable lawyer here will go into the specific details. Now, uh, I want to preface my response to my experience with the Chinese. So these Chinese, they, we, we, I mean, one day I was in Beijing for Young Leaders Forum, so there was Chinese young leaders and ourselves, and in those engagement, and the Africans started now talking about the behavior of the Chinese, how the Chinese behave, and why that behavior is very problematic. And the Chinese simply responded to us and say, but we are not in your country, we are not the one who are implementing those laws, that's your responsibility, why are you asking us about, about what the Chinese nationals are doing? In China now, if you are a Namibian and then you, you are found with drugs, they execute you. There was a South African woman who was, whose bed was found with drugs, and Jacob Zuma, as president, was trying to intervene then, to say, can the person not be arrested? No, no, the Chinese are very clear, they put you to death. What do we learn from the Chinese is that the Chinese do not depend and wait for others to determine what must happen in their country. So they are very clear in terms of, uh, in terms of those things. Let me start with the, with the clarity that is sought. Doesn't it negate foreign owners, their, their, their rights? This is how we are reading it, and Kavetu will go in details. It says all people, they can have acquired the rights. Then he said, the provided that parliament may by legislation prohibit, our, by our simple interpretation, for as long as parliament have not done that, for as long as parliament have not done that, foreigners and everybody else, all persons. So the constitution says that this is what we are giving to everybody in the world, but you are allowed. Yeah? For in other words, the owners of the room can lock it, but for as long as that room is not locked, the right of those people are remaining intact. We are not aware of that, except for that agricultural land, uh, commercial land, that regulation is envisaged by the constitution. So our interpretation is that it's not negated until and unless the day, uh, parliament passes legislation that regulate or prohibit. So immediately, once we have seen that it becomes something, but Kavetu will, will go in details. Now, I was saying I ask about assurance, for, we need to be sure, and we agree that you need to be sure that when we go this path, is there nobody who can wake up and, and, and challenge? Now, there, there are two debates. The debate is that this chapter three must be amended, you know, people are fed up and they just say, chapter three must be amended. But now, for us, we realize that for you to amend chapter three, you must, you must convince the two thirds majority of parliament, you know, for you to do these things. And that process of convincing them is a tedious process, and more so if you are not in that political party. But even if you are in those political parties, there's no guarantee that you will convince everybody to, 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 to be able to do that. We then separated that debate to say, okay, fine, while there are calls to amend article sixteen and chapter three, what is it that we can do? So already, we are framing this debate to say, uh, this is the passage. So the constitution makes provision for that in article, uh, sixteen. So it's permissible, it's allowed by that. So in other words... So in other word, the members of parliament are not proceeding to say, we want to amend the constitution, we want to interfere with the Bill of Rights. Eh, members of parliament are saying, no, we are proceeding from that promise. We we are allowed to the constitution. It's like the constitution when it says that there must be a State of a Nation address. No one come and debate when the president comes and do that address. So we can give you that assurance, we don't know whether we have minded, but in terms of our interpretation, eh, they they, it is, there is no contradiction. It is safer, no one can come and challenge otherwise because the constitution makes provision for you to temper with those rights. Or and it identifies specific people who are not Namibian citizens, in other words eh, foreigners. So once we regulate it, it 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 will negate eh the other one. We make provision, we we make reference to the agricultural, commercial land. It's this little attempt that was made to to be able to to do that. In the interest of time, eh, active is Kaveto.
Thank you, thank you, eh, Job. I think the critical question here, which is a legal question, is firstly, eh, Dr. Ampanda has clearly indicated that what we want to achieve in terms of the draft bill does not require an amendment to the at to Article sixteen of the Namibian constitution. It can be done in terms of Article sixteen one. Now, the critical question we have here is whether we can amend um Article sixteen of the Namibian constitution or chapter three. You know, the Namibian, we, they used to say the Namibian constitution is one of the best constitutions drafted in Africa, on which the, which was the basis for the drafting of the South African constitution. So I would like to refer you to Article seventy-nine of the Namibian constitution. Article seventy-nine is a critical, eh, Article seventy-nine two of the Namibian constitution is one of the most critical uh constitutional provision for members of parliament and also any Namibian citizen. But we have hardly used this provision. This provision, since independence, was only used twice when we faced with the question of corporal punishment in Namibia. And the second time was when we wanted to test the constitutional relationship between the office of the Attorney General and the office of the Prosecutor General, only at those two attempts. So what Article seventy-nines provides for is that should you have any constitutional issues or provisions which you don't understand or there is a dispute in terms of whether you can do that in terms of any provision of the constitution, such as Article eighteen and Article sixteen. So if you have concerns as parliamentarians, whether you can amend chapter three of the Namibian constitution. Article seven, um, seventy-nine point, um, sub-article two provides that. It basically provides for the Attorney General to approach the Supreme Court directly as the court of first instance. And this is eh, this is read in terms together with section fifteen-two of the Supreme Court Act fifteen of nineteen ninety. And that is, that is what the Attorney General did in both instances when Namibia was faced with a question of corporal punishment and a question of eh, the relationship between the Attorney General and the Prosecutor General. So what the Attorney General can do, what parliament can do is to request the Attorney General to approach the Supreme Court to interpret chapter three of the Namibian constitution. And it can be done even within this month or by next month. Where you, the the Attorney General will approach the Supreme Court directly and give it to the court. So we don't waste time when we are challenging a high court, even before you pass this bill. You, the Attorney General takes the draft bill, eh, our bill, and tests the constitutionality of even that bill directly now before it's even passed by parliament through eh, the provisions of Article seventy-nine-two. Where eh, the Supreme Court will hear as the highest court in the country or in the Republic of Namibia will hear and decide firstly on the constitutionality of the bill. Secondly, they will hear and decide also on even whether chapter three of the Namibian constitution itself can be amended. But we hardly use it. It has never been used. Even today, as we are, we are talking, um, we eh, before the twenty nineteen elections, when members of of those who are on party list, politicians on on party list were faced with a question that if they are civil servants, they had to resign. That matter could have simply been resolved by the Attorney General approaching the Supreme Court directly and posing that question, whether that is the correct interpretation. But that is underutilized and hardly used. I don't know whether eh, it's it's the lack of information eh, from also the office of the Attorney General because he's, they are the custodian of of eh, of the Namibian constitution when it comes to its interpretation and protection. So when we are faced with this type of questions, I would like to encourage parliament more eh, to approach the office of the Attorney General through the provisions of eh, Article seventy-nine-two and section fifteen of the Supreme Court Act to clarify that question of law or that question of 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 the constitution. So I believe that answers your question, Honorable Kavakoto. Thank you.
Maybe just to to add in short, eh, Madam Chair. You see, say for example, we say that Article forty-five says members of parliament are representatives of all Namibians. So this is what happened in the practical level. We write, ordinary people, government institutions write to the Attorney General and the Attorney General dishes out an opinion on those things. So it's also possible using forty-five to say that I'm representative of a Namibian people, so I'm writing to you as Attorney General. Because currently in the, in our current setup of parliament, I'm sure that members of parliament don't even have letterheads. Members of parliament, they is literally supposed to have letterheads by themselves and say, I as a member of parliament, so and so, right? They only work through their chief whip and all these things. So a member of parliament is supposed to have their own letterhead and they write and say, Attorney General, I want you to give me an opinion on this, on this matter. Because that's what even local authorities are doing. Ordinary junior people get that service to say in line with these things. But members of parliament are just, maybe they are because of chief whip discipline and and all these things, speaker eh, but our members of parliament are very important people. So using forty-five, we can even also explore that route and say, I want, in order for me to participate, I want Attorney General, can you explore this? If Attorney General says no, you can even go to court. Or or those provisions eh, eh, that I would, I'm just sensitive because of time. Eh, but I thought that there are many options that what activist Kaveto can say. Because now we wait for things to happen in order for us to to be taken to court instead of being sure already at the beginning.
Thank you very much. Eh, there was a hand from Honorable Thete and then Honorable Yambo. Honorable Yambo first seems to be ready. Okay, good. It's fine, proceed.
I think, thank you, thank you Deputy Chair. And eh, let me also equally thanks the the colleagues from HR, I mean, from AR. No, AR. First of all, before I start, I'm I'm one person who doesn't fear reality. And that reality is, we are sorry. I'm apologizing, the petition took long. Twenty, it was given twenty nineteen, we are in twenty twenty-two. There is no harm to say, we are sorry. If we have not done justice to it, we are apologizing. Yes, I don't even want to start explaining, it came during the time of budget, after budget, it was a recent. I don't want to explain all those things. We are, we are simply sorry and we are apologizing. Eh eh, it was really a very, very good petition, but we, as a committee, we can conclude now. We have to done, to do justice to all petitions, the way they comes to parliament. It's for us to listen to to those that have given us the petition and for us to engage other stakeholders. But you are the owner of the petition, obvious. At the end of the day, not today, at the end of engaging all other stakeholders, we will then reverse back to you as to what to do with 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 the petition. So I I don't want members to start sort of like driving the the discussions into a conclusion, what we wants to do and so forth. And we must equally remember that eh, these are petitioners, they are not people that came to seek. I mean, we we are, we should not seek solutions from them, they came to seek solution from us. So any questions that we should pose should be based on o o on what they have presented. And we must not, any general questions that we must pose, we must pose the general based on what is presented to to us. Having said that, eh, eh eh eh, Dr. Ampanda referred to 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 the constitution as a as a eh, eh eh eh, I don't want eh eh, I don't want to use eh, the word that you did not say. What did you say? A problematic constitution. You you somehow said that, or one one of you say that, I simply just wants to say, no, we we have the best constitution in the world as it was said here. But if there is, if there is certain things within the constitution that are problematic, let's face those ones. We we, eh, normally students are rated the best students when you get, let's say for example, even a ninety-five, ninety-eight. But you 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 can't say this, you can't conclude that this student, it's a bad student just because of the two percent of that he or she is missing. Eh eh, it's just a small clarity o o o on that one. And also seeking clarity, it's when your legal colleague say that if you, if we are to table now the proposed bill, this proposed bill must sort of supersede even the 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 constitution. Can that be possible? Or maybe I heard you correctly. Because the Namibian constitution should remain the supreme law. But if there is something that is in the proposed bill, but the constitution speaks something different, then while we have this proposed bill, the same terms are raised equally. There is no harm to request for the amendment of that clause in the constitution in order for them to to be on par. Thank you very much.
Any further, oh yeah, sorry, Doctor. Honorable Yambo.
Yes, I know it's almost.
Almost. That is it.
Thank you Deputy Chairperson. Let me also thank eh, AR activists, Dr. Ampanda and team for a real provocative engagement. It's eh, it's provocative because it's eye-opening. It's eh, the details that you presented from the history up to the legal and eh, the way forward. I think that's that's very important. Um, having said that, um, eh, land, land indeed was approx, eh eh, expropriated by subsequent colonizers, the Germans. I remember having read eh eh eh, reading about after eighteen eighty-four, in eighteen ninety actually, the German, the the Bundestag sent a number of settler colonists to come and settle in Namibia. And of course, that they were, eh, that is the land that was expropriated. And I'm glad that details were given as to how many nationalities own land eh eh in in Namibia. Um, having said that, I don't know really, as we are sitting here or by now, thirty-two years after independence, whether there is a Namibian that actually understood Resolution four-three-five thoroughly. Because as far as I'm concerned, Resolution four-three-five crooked us out of our independence. Evaded us eh, out of what we deserved. Eh, the Constituent Assembly, I'm glad that there was also a a question as to the place, the constitution, the constitution, Constituent Assembly. What were they doing actually? Or what did they, why did they agree to what we have today? But what I know that the party I'm leading now, Swanwa of Namibia, actually refused. Eh, declined eh, on Article eh, on Article sixteen actually. But then there were minority, that, and you know very well that eh, eh, our slogan goes, give the land back to the people. And as far as I know, and I know the Chair, Deputy Chair also talked about or confirmed that indeed the struggle was for the land. But our 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 heroes and heroines' bones must must be turning in their graves now that the land is not yet back thirty-two years after independence. I I did not hear the young man talking about the Odendal Commission. Maybe I missed it if they mentioned it, but eh, this was not reversed. And eh, eh, thirty-two years after independence, the people are still in the White Stand and and Bandu Stand. And I'm also glad that you elaborated on how we are protecting the White Stand and what was expropriated is the, is the Bandu Stands, the homelands or the the the, where the black people live. Eh, meanwhile, maybe if I have to go to the Russian oligarch who bought the four farms. This process actually happened while the Second Land Conference was going on. And I'm glad someone among you mentioned that it was with the blessing of the of the of the minister. So maybe at this junction, one will only ask, who is fulling who? Maybe my last intervention is that of eh, because eh, Job, I I I I'm I'm happy the way you are researching things and doing things and I I hope that I can take you to task to question or research some of the people who actually are in limbo when as far as land is concerned. And these are the people who are categorized as AMBT. They are in the in the urban areas and they are in municipal lands and in the rural areas, they don't have land and it's a whole eh eh eh, research topic that needs to be elaborated. And I will also, I think, because of interest, assist in the process. But otherwise, I really recommend Mike Kavakoto's eh eh, suggestion that we need more time to 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 really eh, eh, make, make justice to this very important eh eh engagement. So maybe if there is a way that we can eh eh organize another time for us to 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 thoroughly talk about these issues, because they are very important, pertinent. Land is everything. I don't agree with recent eh, issues being talked about that land can make, not make you rich. Land is actually what makes you rich, is everything. And I thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Yes?
Thank you Deputy Chair. Eh, regarding the resolution, it is Security Council Resolution of four-three-five. Eh, I I think that resolution, when it was passed, it hit, it hit a number of if. So we 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 can, we can continue living with the if. A decision was taken on if, and this decision was taken, eh eh, this 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 agreement was 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 passed by political party and not necessarily by government. Because this four-three-five came before independence. It was into the election, national election, and it it was maybe even made like, if this political party wins, then ABCD should happen. So we are for eh eh, what, how do you call it? Eh eh. To Xavier Bo. Monsieur Ambokashimo. Eh, we are eh, what state? Sovereign state, we are sovereign state. So we 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 can't just continue because eh eh, a resolution was was passed that probably properties should be protected and this include foreign properties. Now we must continue living with it. What if this 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 political party that 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 agreed to this resolution at independence, they were all dead. And come nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two, it was new political party and they will claim that we are not part of these things. So we we, our argument, that four-three-five, ah, let's drop it. Let's face the future.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, can you please respond to some of those eh queries and give clarities? Thank you.
Eh, thank you very much, eh, Madam Chair and honorable members. Now, the yeah, it's eh, some of the questions are very difficult, particularly eh, with AMBTs. Um, it's eh, perhaps, it's it's very difficult, but I think It's a, perhaps it's very difficult, but I think in my experience, the AMBTs used to liberate us a lot. Let me give you an example. Today, now this time is a season of cultivation. We know very well that when you are in that field on a Saturday from six o'clock even until twelve. And sometimes when the AMBTs come for the April holiday or whatever work we are doing, those ones already after ten, they start saying me a calm place to, so they start going.
Ten is too far.
Yeah, so when they leave and because now out of the children, the children are ten and five AMBTs decide that they are, they are leaving. So our parents, it becomes very difficult for them. So when they leave, we also ask, oh, we are also going. So they, also they got an opportunity to be educated first because they were in urban context. Even when you started the liberation struggle, the AMBTs ended up having a problem because they came from town and they went to exile, they started asking for elections and before, asking for elections and democracies because some of them were coming from schools in nineteen-seventy-two. And then they ended up into serious problems as you know. So it's a social, sociological problem with, that we may not be able to solve and understand. And it's a complex problem that we need to solve. For instance, when we went, when I went to secondary school in Oshakati, they used to have these guys that were born in Oshakati. They used to say, like they're everything, they're gangsters and everything. But the end of the day, nothing, what comes out of the fact that you are born in Winduk? Yeah, we are the Windukers. The Chinese can come here, Jeck Wang and Stina Hun are enjoying Winduk very well and Rudu and Katima, but they don't need to be born from there. So but we also need to emancipate our AMBTs from that mental slavery where they start attaching to say, I'm from Winduk, I'm from Oshakati and you have nothing to show. You have no property, you are just born and you are renting for thirty-two years. So it's a sociological problem that is very difficult to respond. But as far as education and all those things, there is also some positives that the AMBTs used to bring and, and they, for instance, when, when the bread here in Winduk spoils, they don't throw it away, they put it, they dry it because you can eat here in urban context. AMBTs don't eat bread after six days. They dry it and they put it in the fifty kilogram sacks and they bring it to the north and we eat, but we don't know that this is some sort of, yeah, of leftover. We just think that is, we just eat dry and we.
It's normal.
It's normal, but it's a sociological question and we need to engage because our society doesn't engage on these questions. We don't to be able to raise, okay, very fascinating to also see that our MPs are also interested in these sociological questions. You asked about the Oden Dal Commission. In fact, there was a native commission first before the Oden Dal Commission. The Oden Dal Commission is nineteen-sixties or seventies or so, it's later. So there was first a native commission. When I'm speaking about that aggregate of thirty-two million hectares of land that was given first and an additional seven million hectares of land that were, so the native commission, for example, is what led to this thirty-two million hectares of land because they wanted to understand this arambul, what they later went to. But those commissions, remember we speak of communal land, but within the police zone, you also have pockets, yes, the bandustans, the orerevate. Even when the hereros are talking about the corridors, I never understood what the corridor is. Corridor number one and I used to think corridor is a village. Yeah, when you go to Amunus and all those, because they speak about this with pride, actually discover what the corridor means. It's a little space between the two farms.
Yes.
So that's corridor number four, they go there and graze there. It's not something to be proud of. Corridor fourteen, corridor, corridor boy, but it's a very small place and they are there with the congested, with their kettles and things like that. So within the police zone, what they also did, they gave little portion because of the herero, for the damas and not necessarily the damas and the sub because the population have decreased and they become few that were there were already brought into these farms. So the Oden Dal Commission is, we refer to it by referring to those hectares, thirty-two million hectares. You will go deeper and see how were these hectares allocated, how did people lose their land, how did this bandustan? I think the general, within the police zone, is about thirteen million hectares of those communities within the police zone itself by that period. What we say by the constitution being problematic, it's not necessarily the identity, Honorable Lethet, what, maybe, let me qualify what I mean. This constitution says the president can impeach parliament. And this same constitution says parliament, yeah, no, no, the president can dissolve parliament and parliament can impeach the president. Assuming today you as MPs decide that you are going to impeach the president at two o'clock. So five minutes to two, the president releases a statement, parliament is dissolved. What is going to happen? In other words, that's one of the problematic areas, not necessarily, we are not saying the constitution is problematic, but there are many, many problematic areas of our constitution. So you would see, for example, in this, when you just think about it, it's in our country at sixteen, you can have sex and you can have sex and produce children, but you cannot vote. But at eighteen, you cannot get married although you have already kids, somebody, I mean by the time they turn twenty-one, they can easily have four kids, but you are, they are not allowed to marry. And then you can die and go to war and fight and kill and get killed, but you cannot vote. This same constitution says that for you to be president, you must be thirty-five. But even if you are two hundred, you can be president. On a bed, you can be a president because there's no maximum. The constitution put the minimum because they didn't want, they wanted to deal with the youth, but there is no maximum. We can have a presidential candidate that is hundred and two. So those are many, many problematic areas that we speak of the constitution, but within law, they talk about the term called jurisprudence, like you constantly keep developing, keep improving because it's not static. You keep changing and finding a solution to some of those things. What we meant is that we are not saying the bill will supersede the constitution, no, nothing will supersede the constitution. We are saying, and we have seen it, how Honorable Leon just did this thing with the Pega, with public enterprises. What they actually did is that, say for example, the board of University of Namibia or a boards of Mitco, a board of other, there are those laws that says this is how the board must be constituted. They put a provision in the Pega Act that the Pega Act prevails all over all the other acts of any SOEs as far as the composition of the boards are concerned, in fact, and many other things. So they can decide to disregard what is in the UNAM Act, in the Mitco Act, in any other act. So what we are now saying is as far as these things that, once we, with this legislation that is dealing with the, with issues of foreign ownership of land, because people, lawyers are very clever, they find these technicalities. We say, this is a spirit in which we don't want foreigners to own land. If there is some laws that is there that they can, some proclamation, because if there's a multi-police officer, you know, as a black person, you go to Zupak, you can get arrested because those programmations are still valid today. That is why, which is a conversation of another time, that is why you cannot give your children meat if you are from a poor, for the child to the University of Namibia because some of those instruments are still there. So the idea is to make sure that if there is any other problematic, so that this law is not defeated. It's like when the lawyers realized that foreigners cannot have agricultural land in that way, in the new dispensation, they just went to lease it. So to close all those loopholes, that what we were suggesting and that. We are very much alive to the fact that you have to run this process, you have to consult widely, but what we are saying is that this must not, it's, we are not, there are certain things that we push passionately. Yes, we agree speed, we actually hope that this generation of members of parliament, hundred and four of you, you should somehow, it does not necessarily have to be written the way, the commerce, the way we are putting it, but the principles to protect our land, have this land. For example, we are saying, let's assume that this, there are foreigners who own the land, if the owners, if we prohibit them from selling to other land, ultimately, we don't have that land now and legally this person have the right, but we will have it later because ultimately when they die or when they want to sell it, they cannot sell it to another foreign. Ultimately, it's a matter of time, even if after fifty years, it will come back to our children. That's what we seek to do and we know that you would even improve it better, you would even have better suggestion because you deal with these things every day. The mistake would be if this bill is seen as an AR bill. We are simply coming here as students, that's why at the beginning we started and some of you forget, some of you taught us politics, some of you pray for us, some of you were following exactly in your footset. So it's like sometimes even your kids at home can come and say, but I think mommy, this thing is not, it must change. Sometimes you don't agree, sometimes you don't have money, but ultimately there will come a day where you are able to solve that problem. That's why we are living it with you. At least we know that if there is something that we are going to do right to protect the land and you are not protecting the land because of Ampanda, you will also protecting this land for your children. Because the reality is that we are not going to be around and then when you are not going to be around this country, it will be like Sri Lanka. Sri Lanka now does not own the port and airport or so because the decision that was taken by previous generation, because we always want to blame. But I think with this bill, all of us are coming at the same time. We're coming at the same time, we're identifying the problem at the same time and hopefully we are able to solve this problem at the same time. I don't know whether Aktifit, but you want to add anything?
We have, how many means? We are almost done, but quickly, if there's something that you want to, and perhaps before I give you the floor, I want you also perhaps to cater for my query on the communal land. Communal land too, where you are saying in allocation of communal land to a foreigner national, before this act shall be deemed to have been an illegal transaction and shall be that way. How safe are we going to be when it comes to legal wise of these people own already the land and here we are saying it should be depredated?
The colleagues will come in, we will be safe. In fact, there is even a recent judgment. There was, there was Chinese and Egyptian recently who got married north of the red line. And then they were saying, because they were married north of the red line.
They are married out of community of property.
Yeah, they are married out of community of property. So, but they were relying, they went to court and saying, using that proclamation. The response of the court was to say, no, no, the natives, these things of the natives, you are not a native. The Chinese is not a native, the Egyptian is not a native. That's what the court already pronounced on that issue of the, when they were trying to get properties from one another. So for us, the communal land is very, very, very sensitive because that's where the vulnerable are, the uneducated and unempowered. If we allow foreigners to go in there where people are already poor. In fact, we are also trying to protect the poor from themselves because what was happening when they were doing this sand mining, these business people when they're building these roads, these guys simply just went to withdraw five thousand and they withdraw in fifties and what, 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 and then the old lady in the house, bring your basket. And those guys started giving count, count maybe fifty dollar, fifty, hundred, what, 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 until the woman even start getting tired of counting, but it's just five thousand. But it's five thousand in multiples of fifty dollars and they make a decision right today. Before you know it, while you are here, your grandmother has sold a portion. That's how vulnerable those people are in communal land, be it in the bandustan, be it in the reservates, be it there, wherever they are. So we don't want foreigners there at all. So it must be the least that you can see in the current context how it is. So they don't belong, the, how land, land in the communal land is owned by the state, but the traditional leadership administer that land on behalf of the state. There will be no foreigner who is part of the Baster community, who's part of the herero community, who's part of the, of those things. The Chinese are not members of the indigenous communities that are administering land through customary law on behalf of the state. So we are safe because we just keep them out. Because, because imagine if we allow them, this timber, the Chinese will go there in the village and they will start becoming headmen. And in some community, people who just, the communities are so vulnerable because remember to be headman, if a headman dies, you just go to the district and you apply for it. If there is no one, that's why some villages, there are no headmen. So what if the Chinese, in terms of our law, Chinese goes and want to become a headman at Omea, legally, there is nothing that stops them from doing that. And people are vulnerable, that's why we must just keep them out at all. They must not own land, they must not utilize the land in there. They must only utilize land in some urban context, but we are safe already in terms of case law, but we are also safe in terms of customary law. They would have to say, how do you say you as a Chinese, you are part of this community? What, what is your ancestry that you can trace? I know in areas such as Onipa, there are those Finnish children, missionaries who speak local languages. But we also have Namibians here that speak Chinese. In America, you can become a president, but you, a black person can become a president, but you'll never be an American. They will call you African-American. But here we are very accommodative, we don't say German Namibians, they are just Namibians because we are very accommodative. The day we allow foreigners to go to those bandustans and communal land, that will be the end of it. That's the only last defense line that you have.
Good.
Maybe just to come in where Honorable Lethet highlighted the issue of conflict of laws. What if in terms of another provision, okay, I think it's very clear that the Namibian constitution in terms of Article one-six is the supreme law. But one thing that we don't understand is that, for example, we already have, we already have an expropriation ordinance thirteen of nineteen seventy-eight. Currently, right now, the state can expropriate land in terms of that ordinance. And it doesn't only extend to farmland in terms of the ordinance, which was obviously used as a colonial tool. The state can come to your property and temporary take ownership of your house to use it for something. They will compensate you at their own determination of that such compensation. Obviously, probably the ordinance could face constitutional challenges also, but we are saying there's a lot of these proclamations set out by colonial regime, which the state can use, but which we, out of fear of those proclamations, we've set it out very clear also that the act, the land, this bill will take precedent over any other act, not over the constitution. Obviously, the constitution is the supreme law. The moment I bring up such an argument, I'm sure UNAM will eventually take back their law, their law degree. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's the broken.
Yes, I think Chair, what we've really been saying is that we must take cognizance that the land will never increase, but it's decreasing at a very fast rate because of the existing laws that we have, because of the, how we conduct our business. So we must take it very serious that it is one of the most pertinent thing that we must at least try to save because production will still continue. Winduk alone has about a hundred thousand people living in its formal settlement. Cabinet took a decision to expand Winduk to accommodate everyone. Seventy percent of that land does not belong to Winduk, the municipality of Winduk. Yes, it's in their jurisdiction, but they don't own it. Why? Because it belongs to the hands of the settlers. So when the settlers were leaving and the new independence was coming, they had ensured that all these communal farms that we have around Winduk are in the hands of the settlers. So it becomes very difficult even for administration, for local authorities, to make provision for housing for people. So that is in the context that we bring this draft bill to you. So that is in the context that we bring this draft bill to you, to appeal to your conscience and say, it's not. Because we want to do it, but it is because we don't have it. Even when Winduk wants to do the best, do whatever they want to do in terms of housing, they can't, because they are restricted and this land belongs to the settlers. So in other words, we have many of our people that will always say that, you know, we are going home. That's going home literally means that they are going into a corridor or a portion. Of a farm, of a settler. So even other tribes that say they are going home, the only place they call home is the place. That they are given, because their great-grandmother is a generational farm worker. They don't have dignity. They don't have, and 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 Benedict is saying that land is spiritual, land is culture. So we are already limiting a specific sector of Namibians who were exterminated to practice their culture. Because they don't have access to that land. We are now discussing seventy percent of that agricultural commercial land. That are in the hands of white people, yes, we recognize uh these ones that are here. But let us deal with the ones that are not here first, as a process to ultimately getting that land back. So let us not lose sight of the discussion, we are saying that urban land is very important, because we are now speaking about. In practical examples, Stina who owns Winduk, Rundu everywhere, Jeck Wang the same. But the, nobody is taking a decisive decision to say, what if there are Namibians who also want to do property development? How can Namibians assist Namibians get access to that land? But because of practices that we are having, this is what is the, what is happening, and therefore, we are saying. If Stina who is developing in a hanging. At least fifty-one percent of that development must belong to Namibians. Beneficial ownership of Namibians, in no matter what, how you look at it, you, the person can never be a proxy. So we take it a step further and say, we realize that there are black people who are given two million, you only show up when they are doing valuation. So we are saying, this person must actually get the true value of what is happening and of those proceeds. So we are very clear when we are saying that the foreigners can lease, ten years, we're very clear. So we don't want a system where ninety-nine years and all and all those other things um that are there. So we are available for further consultations on the bill. We make ourselves available the day, the eighteenth of March two twenty nineteen, when we took a decisive decision to bring the bill. So it doesn't matter at whatever time uh that you require input from us, we shall be ready and available to do that. And in conclusion, I want to leave the committee with these uh words, to say that who feeds you ultimately controls you. So let that sink in and us analyzing really where we want to go with this bill. To say that, do we want to feed ourselves so that we can own and control ourselves? Or do we still want to remain beggars of those who feeds us, because ultimately, they control us, thank you.
Uh the, we didn't properly explain Madame Chair.
Time, 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 time.
Yes. Yes, yes, Madame Chair.
But this is just one minute.
Yes, Honorable Maria, I've been allowed by the chair. Okay, we didn't explain this thing of Chelsea, and it's quite very important for us, maybe you can also go and and look what they did. The British Parliament just met and they decided that the property. You see, in Namibia, we are scared, no, we have Article sixteen and what, 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 what. The Parliament met and because of the war in Ukraine, the properties, the profits and everything that Ibrahimovic owns. He he no longer owns them.
Sorry.
So we are safe now.
Sorry.
Uh take also into consideration Article twenty-one subsection H.
Which one is it?
Uh proceed.
Homework.
Hmm?
Homework.
Um. I wanted just to 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 make sure, is it not on education?
Amendment the rights and limitations.
Oh, yes, we know that very well, in terms of limitation, it says that all what has to happen here to 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 those principles, you can improve on them. Yeah, so in other word, what we are doing with the bill, we are not de- derogating, we are not moving away, because we are using. So um sixteen subsection one, that says that you can prohibit, you can regulate. So we are moving away, we believe, by the way, that uh the the we must amend the constitution. But we are saying we will come later for that, that is a long, long, long journey. Yeah, so we want now to use already what is available. In fact, we will come for white people, but now, let's focus on the foreigners. For now, we will come later, because those one are Namibians, that's the context that we are talking about. The British, whom we are scared of, have taken the assets of Ibrahimovic, the Russian. So they will no longer come and say, you have taken the farm, will make reference to to Chelsea that has been taken, that's what they did. So what they did to Abraham, actually even makes it easier for us. What Europe is doing to the Russian business people, these people are also business people, their citizens here are business people. Just like what they have done there, we can even do it, so we we, it's a painful thing, people are dying in Ukraine. Our constitution says that we we must advocate for peaceful means, but it's to say, let it rest assured, there will be no issue. We have a case law in the confiscation of Chelsea, we will take our our properties here, because we learn from them. So let's not worry about what the British have said, because they've given us a good example.
Good. Uh thank, thank you very much, um honorable members. Uh, Noble Ampanda and your team. Uh we have reached the end of the beginning of our consultation. It was a very good presentation with an eye-opener on some of the information that we are not aware of. And I just wanted also on the, on the meaning of the corridor. In Noshwambu, we have the house. The house in Noshwambu is Omkara, the corridor. Yeah, meaning that if you are living in that corridor of the house, what benefit do you get from there? That is the 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 example that I just wanted to to clarify what the corridor means. Uh having said that, I. As I alluded to earlier, that uh this is the beginning of our consultation. The bill has opened up uh our eyes and ears. And we are now going to um to invite those stakeholders, as I've mentioned earlier. And from there, procedurally, we also have to go to the grassroots level, to our communities. Where many stakeholders, as you have also indicated, will take part and um. Will will find a way forward, and after we have done so, we will bring the report to the House. And that's where we are now going to be guided by all members of Parliament that are not part of this committee. And during the discussions, I think we will find a way to address the concern of 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 the land. Even me, as I'm sitting here, do not have a piece of land. What about my children? So and my children are not that biological children. Is every Namibian child is is our child. Uh therefore, I really do appreciate your coming and um. Sorry for the delay again, it was not a deliberate thing, it was just the situation was beyond our control and we all know. Hence, one says it's never, eh, late or.
It's better late than never.
It's better late than never, so here we are today. After consultation, if there is a need to call you back again, we'll do so. Otherwise, with these few remarks, I would like to sincerely thank you once more again. Honorable members, uh Noble Ampanda and your team and the media. I hope you are going to to present it as it is, don't add and don't don't minus, don't twist it, we want it straightforward. I I is, I I'm really happy that it was a fruitful uh uh discussions and I I would like us to. Sincerely make sure that we address the concern of the land. For those who are fighting, those who sacrificed their lives because of the land, their spirit is with us. And it will haunt us if we are not honoring what they were fighting for. So thank you once more again, and our uh our meeting is adjourned, thank you.